Council meeting tonight. And we start our meetings with a pledge of allegiance. And then we have a prayer by one of our local pastors. And Pastor Rick will offer our invocation and maybe tell us a little bit about your church.
Oh, Wilmore Anglican Church. That one of our councilmen is a part of, yes sir. Right here at the Asbury Seminary, the Cowan Building in Asbury.
Thank you.
Yes, you better.
Y'all would join me in a pledge of our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite.
Please remain standing.
Would you pray with me? Almighty God, you are worthy at all times to be praised. And especially at a time like this, when we gather together for this particular purpose. Lord, we thank you for the gift you've given us in this town and in this community. What a gift Wilmore truly is. And Lord, we thank you for the gift that you've given us in these leaders, these public servants. Lord, I thank you for them, for the men and women who lead us and serve us. And Lord, we thank you for the gift of your presence with us. And I pray, Lord, at the end of our day, no matter what it is we've brought in, where it is we've come from, that somehow you would help us and help this city council, Lord, to pause, to receive from you, to walk in wisdom and discernment as they lead and as they serve our town. We pray your blessing upon them, Lord. We pray your blessing upon this evening as we've gathered together. We pray all these things in the matchless name of Jesus our Lord. Amen.
We have letters coming. While he makes his way over to his seat, we have a special presentation tonight. And there's a little more enthusiasm in the room than some of our meetings. And that's all good. And so I'm going to introduce Lisa Preston and then ask you to introduce your students or your program. How you would like to go? I do have some brochures that she's brought that explains a little bit of what you're doing. Do you want that passed out later or?
I've passed out some.
We have the black folder the council has. You have one.
And the flyers.
And the flyers. And there's some others for community members if anyone wants a copy of what they're going to be talking about.
I think it would be better if they started.
Hi, I'm Ella. Thank you so much for letting us speak tonight. We want to share an idea that we believe will change all of Jessmyn County, especially the students and families.
One day in my class, Miss Preston showed a video about Malawi. There was a little boy and a man beside him. He said, "This is Joshua. He didn't eat yesterday, he didn't eat today, and he probably won't eat tomorrow." This broke our hearts. We found out that in a village called Kafune Day, Malawi, there are over seventy orphans out of four hundred people. We said, "We're going to change that. We're building orphanage for these kids. We're going to make sure that they are fed every day. We are creating a sustainability program with livestock and chickens and farms so that the orphans can keep having food."
Our class created Jessmyn Cares, a movement that will change our world with all of us uniting together. City, county leaders and businesses, churches, and organizations. We can bring hope to a group of kids half a world away.
This project has already changed our lives. We believe now that it will change the lives of all kids in Jessmyn County. We have already become more responsible and hard workers. We've had to think strategically and critically about the best ways to do things.
We are reaching out to our community and speaking.
Judge David West said Jessmyn County would give us a large donation to get us started. Then we can ring the bell at the courthouse so all of Jessmyn County will know about Jessmyn Cares.
You have a details, you have a detail, you have a special binder with our plan. You can see our goals, vision, and detailed budget of what we're doing. There are even some pictures of the orphans who will be helping.
Will you be a part of our world-changing story? We believe with the school system and the community working hand in hand, we can do something amazing. In this process, we'll be helping our community become known for its kindness and love. Jessmyn County will inspire other county, other students across the state and nation to create their own world-changing projects. The whole world will see that Jessmyn cares.
I have the privilege of teaching with this passion every day. It's a lot of fun. So just eleven weeks ago, my class and I were discussing an idea that just exploded into action. We studied about Malawi and upon hearing about the poverty there, the students were just like, "Let's go. Let's get on a plane right now, let's head to Malawi and build an orphanage." And they started drawing out their own orphanage blueprints. They were brainstorming ways that we could raise money to support the orphan care program coming out of Jericho Initiative here in Wilmore. They became immersed in the idea of inviting the whole community together to make a difference. Inspiration flowed and transformation began. We were a third grade class with average leadership skills. And then within a few weeks, the kids have become a responsible leaders who brainstorm like adults and analyze everything and think about putting others first. I've seen shy kids turn into public speakers, willing to share with anybody about their dream. They've researched the mission statements and vision statements of various organizations in Jessmyn County and analyzed how we could all work together. We've learned about governing processes, public speaking, connecting with the community. And we've learned a whole lot in eleven weeks about patience and flexibility and perseverance. My students want to provide a home for the orphans in Kafune Day. And they're determined to inspire other kids in Kentucky and beyond to do their own service projects. In all my years of teaching, I have never seen a, an idea take root in the hearts of kids and change them like this. One student raised his hand and asked me, "Miss Preston, what would happen if you pass away? Who would lead this then?" And then I decided to start dying my hair. If they think I'm going to kill over here. So we talked about succession and the possibility that one day, one of them would be leading Jessmyn Cares. When you see nine-year-olds talking about the legacy they're going to leave and how they're going to change Malawi kids for generations to come, it's a little slice of teaching heaven. Mayor Rainwater was gracious enough to come to our class and hear our story and invite us here to speak. So we're just looking for people to get on board with Jessmyn Cares and help make the orphan care program a reality. We would appreciate any ideas, any support that you could offer on uniting the whole community toward this effort. Thank you for your time and your attention.
I promised the students if they would come to City Hall, I would have a little trick for them. And I want to give you a small token of gift from the city. It's not money, but it is an encouragement because you're key to this idea. And it's a little key to the city. And I have large ones and I have small ones. And you'll have to choose. So if you'd like to have one, you're welcome to come up and have one. All of you. I have large and I have small. I have large for everybody. Or I have small. Well, they open up all the doors, Lord. They're actually just a symbolic key to your leadership. Only important people get it. It's the only thing that a mayor gives to give out. And it's got a train on it and it's got our date of when our town became the origin of our town. And as you came into town down at Subway, they're painting a poster on the side of the wall that will say, "Welcome to Wilmore" and the date on that. So I wanted to give each of you one of these because you came and made a presentation. You want a small, you have small. You want a large, you have large. Well, I can't do that. Because I, you have twenty-four in class, right? And as I begin to think, I told if you came, I would give you a gift. And I was wondering, I don't think I can leave those out. So Ms. Donna went to the back room and dug out everything we had. So I think there's just enough for everybody. You have twenty-four.
In the air, I think there were seven.
Okay, you get one and then, does everybody get one? And I just want to make sure we have enough because we can go pick up another one if we're gone. Four, five, six, seven, nine. You're welcome. Oh, turn around. Here, council. Let's do a group shot, maybe up here. You guys get behind them if you don't mind. We put the students in the front. How about that? You're the one that's going to have to write the check. Maybe up here? You guys, please talk to your minute. It's real cold. We have. This way, Donna gets back. She's wanting to make sure the keys were available tonight. She'll be right here. I don't think the judge is going to wait. He's done. He got the one he wanted. Judge, you said you already wrote a big check, is that what I heard?
Sure, we're going to participate with.
Yes, sir. And well, that puts a little pressure on Little Town.
They would love for you to go to their site and like it. And that would let your friends be able to see that as well. And somebody may decide they want to support that effort in some way.
Well, I was so impressed with twenty-four kids in a classroom. And how mature they were and how visionary they were and how passionate they were about an idea.
And we have, and there's a province school. Was there a province school teacher that is connected to the program?
What did you end up doing there? That would be a question. We're going to do another photo so that Donna's in the photo with us. So somebody take photo. Kim, will you get me one?
Everybody smiling?
We're trying. This way, all your classmates have one also. Okay, are you responsible? You be responsible? There's a key here. I think we need that to make this work, right?
Thank you.
Or is this yours?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have a, some more items of business, you're welcome to stay and you're welcome to go. The second part of this project is the mayor's presentation is more of an informational. Over the last few days, we've been in budget meetings and budget hearings with the council and with department heads. And last week, as I, I was downtown at the coaster car, I walked the sidewalks and realized that the sidewalks were not in as bad a shape as I thought they were. As you thought they were, as we budgeted for. And then as we began that project some two years ago, I think with Andy's initiative of the first money that went into that, two hundred and fifty thousand. When it got to bid and with the preliminary cost, we are over budget. And because we did a lot of exploratory work of other options of what we might do downtown, aerial photos and with little tree islands and with parking behind buildings and two tap applications for transportation funds and they provided those applications. So we ate up about fifty thousand in engineering costs and architect cost. And we only had two fifty in the total project. So the project came in at two hundred and thirty thousand forty-five dollars. There's really no more arc of money to add to that without just coming out of the city. So on Friday, Jeff Mowley and I met with a representative of banks engineering and met with Manley Bolt Taylor, who is the contractor with MS Concrete out of Elkhorn City. And asked them if they would consider redoing their design of the project to leave the some thousand feet of concrete, take out all the bricks that goes across the sidewalk and lines the curb edge, cut a ditch there with that eight-inch curb area, put the conduit in there, install the new lights, and then pour back all the tree wells and light wells holes with stamped concrete. It should be red and it will look, actually looks like brick the way it's stamped, two this way, two that way. And that would cut the cost of the project in, and I'm going to use Jeff as my backup. He said, "At least half, about a hundred thousand dollars." So that would bring us back to within budget and allow us a few dollars for change orders, allow us a few dollars, more than a few dollars, fifty thousand maybe, to do other improvements down there. We have to spend that money in that project because we signed a contract to do that. But we would not tear out what looks like decent concrete just to put it back. There are also some concern is you're going to have to take the steps to out that go into each building because the steps are poured on the concrete. So you are right up against the buildings. And those are hundred-plus-year-old buildings. So anything you're jackhammering or digging or sawing up against a building puts that building at some jeopardy or risk. And didn't think the contractor would say, "Sure, we'll work with you." But he said, "Sure, we'll work with you." And so one of the bigger pieces of this is that it cuts the project from running up into September to he said, "I can probably do this in about a month." Is that right, Jeff?
Right.
About a month. So it substantially advances this project. You get the trip hazards all taken out. You get everywhere there was a tree or a light, you get new LED lights, you get new conduit. You're not, you're not changing the dynamic of downtown Wilmore to tear out a sidewalk and put the same sidewalk back. What you're really doing is taking out all the trip hazards and those areas that we had to fix and putting in new lighting for a savings of about a hundred thousand dollars. So I am asking if the council will approve that change in the project to, as I've said. Unless you have questions.
I'm curious to know where that hundred thousand would go to and kind of like what that plan looks like. I mean, it was only recently that I learned that trees would be part of the new plan. I know that originally when we took out the trees, that we weren't going to replace all the trees, but we were going to have potentially bump outs and have maybe half dozen trees as opposed to the amount that was there. But I know many people that are upset that trees are gone and there's no trees coming back with the current plan. There's a lot of narrow trees that could be planted, most downtown's had trees. I know some business owners do like that, but I know that, but the business owners are one, constituent. So am I correct?
I'm not opposed to trees. I put the trees in to start with. So I was for trees. It was just the dynamic of the trees having a life of twenty-five to thirty years. And they're gnarly, they die, they are a problem, they grew into.
Those species were, yeah.
Those were, yeah. They were quantity cherry. They were the prettiest trees, messy in the spring, but beautiful in spring. I'm not opposed to not, to not putting trees back, but we don't have trees in the proposal. We were going to add decorative planters and more benches and more aesthetics to it if we could. Again, the project did not, the state did not approve us having bump outs. Because that's a state highway. So we didn't feel we could put trees back without having the bump outs where you'd set the trees out in where people would park. And then that's where we got into a shortfall of planning money because we were going to have to replace those eight parking spaces somewhere else downtown. We hope to make that work.
It seems like, seemed like banks had played additional parking with this plan. But I'm sure their original plan was a million dollar, but you can't get money without having a plan for more money.
And we have a plan. And we could still begin to submit those plans. Twice we submitted, once we finished second and once we finished about three out. So those plans are complete and they're for parking behind the buildings and some other renovations. So it does save, being over budget. I mean, we're going to have to find thirty-two thousand more dollars if we do the plan as it is right now. Because we've already spent fifty and we have two thirty on a contract. So it's two eighty project as a right now.
And you would save about a hundred, so you'd have seventy to play with to do some things.
If everything is.
Not sure with those things.
The other thing that James and Jeff had mentioned is if we did tear out the sidewalks, we have a substantial amount of water lines that's on the other side that we were going to get involved with. And we are looking at a major project of bringing a water line all the way down, but it would be in the street. And so it would not interfere with this particular project. But that's a much bigger project, million-dollar project coming down the bike for a new line. But it does get us back into budget. And it does give them a directive of what to start to do in about a week when they start this project. If you're in agreement with that.
Does this address any of the items that you and I discussed when we were down there?
The ones with the gentleman that met us?
Yes.
It won't change the outlet of that alley because it's not our alley and it's got a fire hazard involved in it.
Yeah, the one item that I did think was a good idea was, and I know we've talked about this before, but there's no planned way from getting from one side of the street to the other. I would love to have some kind of crosswalks there. And I would love it if one of their crosswalks involved a handicap access on both sides. So that if you are handicapped, if you do have a wheelchair, obviously you have several people here in town that cruise around on wheelchairs, if there was a way for them to get from one side of the street. I don't think that costs much. I don't want to open the door to five hundred other ideas about what we should do, I understand that. But if we're opening that door now, then the one that I would lobby for is one end of the street or the other, or in the middle, you can decide that. But some kind of crosswalk and some kind of handicap access. That was one of the items on the shortlist.
Yeah, I think our confusion in that was whether we had the right to direct people to cross the road on the state road.
Right, that's always been what I've been told.
Is there a liability if they get in and we don't want to cross?
Right. But most other towns have crosswalks across. I'm sure there's some kind of hoops to jump through.
And that's where you go back to banks and they have that for you. And you pay them, but that's.
I just think it's the right thing.
So as part of the Wilmore Business Association that we've talked about, the benches and the topiaries, can we use some of that money for that?
This is your all's decision as a council.
I didn't hear what you.
We were going to be, the executive committee of the Wilmore Business Association proposed to the mayor and Jeff to beautify downtown since we weren't getting the trees. And so we've come up with a few pictures and a plan to make it beautiful down there. So we were going to raise the money, but if there's money of Dover, then that would be. Just go ahead.
So are the trees out of the question? Is there no place for trees at all?
They could go back in the same holes that we had trees before, if you want to put trees back.
This new plan D was to fill those in.
Fill them in, stamp concrete.
Brad Hocken showed, he actually just planted one in my home that is much, it's a narrow, I mean, we see them all the time when we go to the restaurants or things, that much more narrow of a tree that still offers some greenery. And he or someone else could advise towards that. I definitely like the idea of more benches, more places for folks to sit and gather. I know that we had interest in a bike locking station. It was just some odds and ends that encourage gathering. What that would look like, I don't know if that would take a little bit more committee or a little bit more dialogue than what we. What that would look like, I don't know if that would take a little bit more committee or a little bit more dialogue than what we had here. I, I like, I saw the big plan for makes engineering and then it kinda got chopped up to what we had money for. And I don't know if I missed the council meeting and didn't see where it ended or if it.
We went from a million dollar plan to a two-hundred-and-thirty thousand.
Right, and when we did, we didn't have much. I don't, I wasn't here to give voice on what things got cut.
Basically, it's to replace sidewalks and take away the trip hazards and make them safe.
But now we don't need to replace the sidewalks.
Well, we need to replace the trip hazards. The little brick, briquettes or called, I was there uh this weekend. And one place on the sidewalk, there's like three stacked up on top of each other, laying in the sidewalk. You know, so those are out down through there. Those would all come out, they would saw that area about this big, down eight inches, and then pour concrete in there. And then stamp it back and forth to the look, red brick, pour concrete, stamp concrete.
I mean, when, when I initially envisioned what the money would be going to, I mean, beautification and, and something that bring, that continues to highlight that downtown for our businesses and for those of us that enjoy going downtown. So sidewalk and trip hazard, it, to me, it's not critical that we need to replace the sidewalks. I haven't looked closely at it. Um I just wanna increase pedestrian activity in our downtown. And if that means losing parking spaces, then so be it. I, I think people.
Well, that's been, that, that. It sounds like we can't, we can't do that. They're not gonna let, state initially said, no, you can't impede the, if you don't have any.
I don't, I don't think there's even room for a bike lane or something like that through town. I don't know if we've looked even at that. That's not a possibility if there's space.
We have Trailhead that we were supposed to build next install this porch.
Yeah, and we have someone to design for. I, I think we've been focusing more of these dollars though on a specific area of downtown.
I'm sorry, I just, the original plan had leveling of the sidewalk. Would this mean that the leveling of the sidewalk is out? Cause over on the, if you're facing the tra- the train tracks over on the left-hand side, the slant of the sidewalk is pretty significant. So if you're pushing a stroller. I, I know, I, I really do. Um but I walk downtown all the time, we're there every day, this is what we do. But so, I mean, it, it's pretty, it, it feels pretty risky at times, you know, as with the sidewalk slant.
What locations?
Oh, I mean, it's pretty much all through um through that left-hand side of downtown. So um basically from UK nursing, at least through shades of blue grass. I mean, it's, it's a pretty significant tilt. Even kinda before that, but yeah, I mean, and you, you feel it when you're pushing a stroller and more so than if you're just walking.
Well, I'm, I presented to you as, as an option if you wanna get the project back to within budget and have some money to do other pieces, we can do that. If not, then we will have a thirty thousand dollar deficit on this project if we have no change orders.
And that's the problem is it's not, it'll be more than thirty. Because that doesn't do any sort of landscape stuff, doesn't do.
And we have some curbs that are broken that they are gonna fix, and that didn't include those. So that would be some orders. But the biggest thing is not taking out a thousand feet of concrete.
You were saying they might pressure wash it?
It will pressure wash it.
Get it, the whole concrete will look a lot brighter.
It's gonna look almost new if you, as much as you can with pressure washing.
It will make the business owners very happy that you're not.
Uh and there will still be some interruption, but it's more minimal. It's not right up against their door, it's not in their doorway. And it's gonna be those little strips along the edge and that go down the sidewalk.
I'm not sure how soon we need to make this decision, but would it be possible between now and the next meeting for you to set time with three council members and three council members due to different times downtown to just look at it and talk about what we're, what we're doing? I mean, I don't, I know that would be a significant amount of time, but to put eyes on.
I'm retired, I, I meet all the time, I'm here every day, so.
So you'd be open to that?
I think you'd be willing to buy breakfast for everybody. If I was the mayor.
I, I think we would start before the next council meeting with the project. So um, I mean, Jeff?
Not, not to knock the meeting out, but I mean, the contractor's under the impression that he's starting around the fifteenth. Which ever plan he starts.
The fifteenth?
Yeah.
And the contractor's ready to go with either point. He would start, it's not a deal. I mean, he thought he was gonna, the project as it was.
Our next meeting is the nineteenth?
Yeah.
And whatever happens on this round, we're gonna keep asking for a greater grant for funding of things such as leveling sidewalks or whatever.
Yeah, I doubt that we'll come back to leveling sidewalks once we've done this piece.
Then you'd have to tear out.
You have to tear out two hundred thousand dollars worth of work. Uh those sidewalks are, not to argue the point, but they're, they've been managed for thirty years. And that's the first time I've ever heard anybody say you can't push a stroller over. But I don't push strollers anymore. And I respect that. But I, I will take away the bump bumps. And I'll take away the trip hazard at the curb uh with this project.
And put a handicap crosswalk?
I'll try.
Well, with that understanding, then I'll move that we amend.
It was stable true.
No, I, I understand that.
Again, uh we don't own the sidewalk.
I understand that too. Like other people have, I just wanna be able to say to people, we've tried. I've heard for X number of years that we can't do it. If you go to Nicklestown, they've got all kinds of crosswalks there. Little Lawrenceburg, they got lights though. If you go to Midland. Most, most little towns have them.
Okay. Just tell me what you wanna do, folks.
I made a motion.
For what?
That we amend the project as you described it tonight with an understanding that we would investigate the possibility of handicap crosswalks.
When you say handicap, you just mean a ramp down?
Not even a ramp, just a cut in the curb so they can go.
Okay.
Jeff knows we. You may not like it, but you know.
All right, thank you for your motion. Leonard Sager, discussion?
Yeah, I, I think that we're leading to the next discussion of what happens with that seven grand. Is it handicap crosswalks, is it benches, is it a few trees? So I just would like that if we go this direction, that we all have some input in what, what we do with that remaining dollars to, to really splash and kinda put some beauty and color in downtown.
Well, on, under the proposal that's been shared, you're gonna have to dig new holes for trees cause they just got filled in, right?
Well, we just won't fill that one in. But we can't go back and do it, we need that in plan before it comes in. Now, you're gonna have to, there's gonna be some labor to dig out twelve inch stumps that's under the sidewalk. Put that tree back in that same two-foot well.
I think Andy's volunteering to do that.
That's an adventure serve, a former administrative assistant.
I agree. I mean, I, it's in the scope of the project for them to remove all those stones.
What's that?
For the contractor to remove that.
They will remove them down, like I think you said, eight inches though, enough to pour concrete. Not to necessarily remove the tree back.
Right. Yeah, just enough to get the concrete.
So what does my council approving need to do on this project with your motion?
The motion as it was stated fills in those, so if we want to amend the motion, I'm willing to do that.
How many um tree spots were there in the project?
Um for, what was the place named?
How many tree spots, had there been a dozen?
I don't think eleven, if I'm not mistaken.
How many?
Eleven, I think.
So if we looked at it to see if there was between four and six spots, two or three on the other side.
This changes the whole project. Maybe we do have to have breakfast tomorrow. Because it changes for the contractor, he's thinking he's more comfortable down. You're now asking him to dig out a hole to plant trees. But it still is gonna be savings over tearing out concrete.
Right.
I mean, I think you'd want to do it within the budget.
Well, I think the business owners will be thrilled that we're not tearing out their sidewalks. I've had conversations with some of them, and it's been less than positive.
Uh not too excited that we're down.
No, they're not, they're not.
I don't want to lose them. Well, I'm not in favor of a sterile downtown with concrete. But Sharon says that her plan is.
Big tall topiaries, real ones, so they don't have to be replacing them. Bitches down there, Aaron, what were some of the other things that?
Well, I think we, we talked about topiaries which would give some height. And also if they're in these large containers, they can be movable on top of that concrete. And if they die, you replace them instead of digging out trees from the sidewalk. But also, we talked a little bit about like lemon trees, things that might blossom and also give some color. Um it was, I think, a really elegant solution to not have any trees, which I personally love. Um but it, it gives some life and greenery downtown.
Topiary is a fancy word for?
For a shaped tree, so think like a ball.
It's like a shrub, but it's a bucket?
It's in a big bucket, three different levels, Andy.
So you've got your big one and then a smaller one and then a smaller one there. We just, we're kinda, you know, we missed the trees at Christmas, old-fashioned Christmas because they really, you know, made it beautiful down there. So we could put lights on all these things. We also talked about lights across the street, um for, you know, all the time down there, so just.
That's difficult.
We, we have been told no to that, to have asked.
Would that be great with alleys? Alleys could do that.
We could go along the street, which came across the street.
Except for the crosswalks.
I thought this would take one minute. I'm so excited, we saved seventy thousand dollars.
But, but we also want the um business owners to take pride in, we're gonna put um flowers, um and they can be fake, whatever.
Flower boxes?
Yeah, flower boxes, um.
Like window boxes?
Yeah, window boxes, flowers down there, and we just really make it pop.
That's not part of this project.
Could be, with the same.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think somebody else is doing that. We're, we're trying to get to where the contractor knows on the fifteenth what they're gonna do.
It would be what we would do if we have remaining dollars, everybody gets the same planters and city buys and.
And I think that could be a whole other.
Management. But I, I think in, in the discussion that we're having now, like it, it's not, I'm not, I don't have to know what we're doing with those, those remainers. I just would like some more discussion on how we have the remaining as opposed to just one or two of us making that call. Um but I'm, I'm fine with
Well, here.
The, the motion that's on the table.
All right, because we need the money in order to be able to do that stuff, ain't we? And we shouldn't plan any of that until the project's over. Around eighty-seven thousand dollars in change orders. Getting out candy, I hope I had another work for the contractor.
He is a contractor.
Yes, and so he knows how to take seventy thousand.
Okay, back to our original discussion. The motion is to amend it back to uh.
What you shared.
Okay. And investigate the possibility of. Of crosswalk?
We can, we can.
And we need to investigate the possibility of trees now because if we pour concrete, we're gonna be redundant taking it up again. It's been a lot of fun.
Was the trees in the pot satisfy that?
I don't know, for some.
I don't, I'm not sure if it fully satisfies me to have as opposed to a few real trees.
That's the whole point of having the kick out, was to have really nice trees, which we cannot do. And stakes at our sidewalks, our street is too narrow to cut it, so.
We can add those.
Yeah, potentially, I, I think right now we can say yes to what we decided. Now, if we find a tree solution before they pour the concrete, then we do, but that has to happen in the next few days.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, please indicate for aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, council. Um approval of amendments of, of April twenty-one. Thank you. Second discussion, second, any discussion? All in favor, please indicate for aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I have one new business piece I'd like to present to the council to consider. It's an ordinance changing the Wilmore council meeting time from six PM to five PM. Part of this is driven by nine department heads that we expect to be here most every night. They get off work at four-thirty, they have to go home, they have to come back. Um consistent with the county, you meet at four o'clock. Nicksville meets at five o'clock, so this would be consistent with the rest of the county governments. Be at five o'clock. And then our staff that work here, employed in the building, we would move right into council after building's closed at four-thirty. We have met at five in the past. We've met at slightly seven in the past. But it seemed that this might be a time to move um to a more consistent within governments of Jasmine County to a regular meeting time. All were in favor, all of our department heads are in favor. Or at least they were the last time we talked about it. Two, three, four, five, six, seven are here tonight. So um that's a, would take a motion of the council, uh two readings. It's an ordinance changing. Uh would not take effect until we've had two readings, so would be in, probably in June before that would take effect.
It's been at this time for quite some time, I imagine. It's been at six PM for quite some time. It, it's somebody who could be in for dinners and that sort of thing. That being said, I'm kinda wondering about like community members finishing their job and wanting to be part of the facility that they're working outside of here. But I'm not sure, I mean, I definitely think that the point that you made that your department heads would prefer that makes sense about them thought, that's a long, this is a long day for them.
Well, Laurie, for instance, tonight, um has a daughter, like uh, and begged that she could go, and I encouraged her to go. And uh we have that consistently. They drive from out of town, uh stay longer. The county does it at four and anybody that wants to get to a meeting does. Uh Nicksville does it at five, anybody that wants to get to a meeting does. If you have business with the council, you'll get to the meeting. I think it ends us some time to go home and have supper instead of rush to go and come back. I think it's more of a consideration to our staff as much as anything. Anyone working in the city, I don't know anybody that works past five, and most institutions are off, couldn't get here. So I think it could fall consistently with that. So I think it's a, a good move um to move to a five o'clock meeting time if, if the council, it's ours.
But I will be here next meeting to speak to it, so I'll speak to it when I, my, my phone. I don't, I don't really think that, that, I mean, I respect the county employees and their time. But I don't think that's gonna, the coordinate city. but I don't think that's gonna, the ordinance is to promote greater public participation. I don't think that is true, I think most people work till five o'clock, so if you're working till five, you're gonna have to either take off work to get here for a meeting or get here late and miss probably the meeting, so. I, um, personally, I don't, I don't like the five o'clock, but that's just not me.
Curious question with how long most people work till, I mean, especially as we think of the hours that have been changing since people work from home and the variety of things, but it's a fair question. I, I mean, or a fair point, for sure. I, I wonder how we first arrived at six P M. In some ways, it seems like a great idea for our, our staff. When I think of the folks that attend our meetings from the public, I don't know, it's all within that as far as whether it would make a difference for them. I'm not really, boy, that, but as I'm talking, I'm just talking. In many ways, it seems like it's a great idea.
Well, I would just say, look at our audience, um, the majority are staff, um, at every meeting we have, the majority are staff. That's a good thing, I think. People have the opportunity, I mean, they can watch it in the comfort of their home or they can come to meetings and read about it online, so, I mean, there's, we're not taking anything away from anyone to attend meetings in any way. But it is a kind of a, it's the day, Mondays are long days, so we have department meetings in the mornings, and so you just move through and you save that hour that most are just in their offices or hanging out or coming back, so that was, that was part of the initiative, uh, to be honest with you. And then as I started checking around, most governments meet before six for council meetings. So, uh, and, and both of ours in the county meet at four and five, so it seemed to be consistent with, uh, most governments.
For sales, I don't know whether for salesmen's?
I do, but I don't remember.
Does it impact any of our council members, our schedules?
I'll have a hard time, but I'll make it work, I mean, it's, it'll make it harder for me. I can, I'll figure it out.
And Jim, you, you normally end at five, so it's kinda like?
I don't end at five, but I can, if that's, well, with me, that's what I'll do.
You don't ever end.
Well, I've had two very good ideas tonight, it looks like.
Well, I, it, sometimes it's gonna be hard for me to get here at five, it would've been today cause I've had it all day, so occasionally, but I'm probably more flexible than some other people. I don't, does that?
Do you know the owner of the store?
I do.
Well, um, I will let you think about it and, um, I'll ask you what you think in two weeks. See if there's any interest in making that change. Are there any other reports tonight from council or staff? I think staff are about reported out, aren't they, two hours this morning? Anything for the floor?
Is that a public comment, is what you mean?
Pardon?
Public comment for that? Back of our grand residence, a Wilmore community member, Gage Levitt. Uh, I have two comments. One is about the ordinance that you guys were just speaking about on times of the meeting. Yes, there are a variety of different times, and I understand the times of meetings in Jessman County specifically. And the meetings where typically citizens come out, and across Kentucky, you have the most engagement from citizens in those meetings that are at six or at seven o'clock because of the work schedules and things like that. And the counties that have meetings that, a lot of county meetings are eleven A M. in the morning or they're at four, to be consistent and, um, not to be consistent, but to be conducive to employees, those meetings are often not attended by community members, not because they don't care, they watch it online or they read about it, but that doesn't mean that they have a voice that can then be heard. So, they either have to take off of work and sacrifice, and basically they're paying to then attend a public meeting because they care so much about an issue that they have to take off their job or they call in sick. And I know people that have done that because they care, but I don't think that's necessarily fair of us to ask our Wilmore residents to do that. And then also, as far as being, um, responsive to the staff, maybe that's an opportunity to either do an adjusted flex hour on Mondays for the staff not to have to work extra hours, or since you guys are already meeting, maybe the staff doesn't need to do report outs at city council meetings. Um, I've attended many city council meetings across the state, and this is actually the first city that I've attended and that I've seen where the staff, department heads give reports. And not to say that that doesn't happen, but I have not been privy to that in other locations. But also as a citizen, I love your reports, cause I love to know what's going on in the community, but that could also be a way to adjust, um, so that was my first thing. And then as far as the downtown project and the sidewalk project and the trees and so on and so forth, I have lots of thoughts about it, but this isn't really the time or the, um, the place to share those. But, um, I would ask that when you are making your decisions on your lighting downtown, I know you said we're looking at L E D. lighting and the business district is looking at maybe the string lights and things like that, that you walk downtown, um, because many cities across the state have chosen to do beautiful lighting, they think it's wonderful, but no one shows up downtown at night to look at what lights coloring already exists. And so in a lot of places, and I'm happy to provide examples, cities, it looks haphazard, even though the design is beautiful, but you have warm lighting on this side of the street, cool lighting over here, and then warm lighting isn't all consistent either, so you have different variations of different colors, um, and I think that it's best looked at by someone who's not colorblind, um, just to throw that out there as well, not that I'm saying anyone is, but it's helpful in those instances where those cities have said that, oh, we sent somebody out at night, well, they sent a person with a visual impairment, and that doesn't necessarily equate to knowing and seeing the correct colors, so I'd ask that the council considers that as well. And, um, I'm so sorry, uh, my, um, my child also requested, as she was listening, she asked if we could see about putting in bike racks, so when we bike downtown, that there's somewhere to safely lock our bikes. And I appreciate, I've been told by other community members that, oh, Wilmore's a safe place. If you have to tell me it's a safe place, it's probably not as safe as you think. And I've actually had two bikes stolen, and a fun fact is if you repi- report your bike stolen on either your homeowner's insurance or anywhere else, it makes you ineligible to get a new policy for three years, regardless of where that bike was stolen at. So, um, that's a, a challenge, so if we make our, um, our downtown more conducive for those that like to ride and wanna keep their bike safe, um, definitely please include bike racks.
I have, uh, one thing to just mention, just to get the word out. If we know anyone who experienced flooding, um, in this last flood, I had three or four inches of water in my basement, I thought my insurance was gonna cover it, it didn't. I was chatting with Bud Simon and he connected with FEMA, and so I called them on Friday and they've already sent someone out, they've already given me a quote of what they can offer. So, um, I can supply you with the web link, um, but we also have got some emails on it as well, so.
They're going door to door?
They are, they're in town.
That's great, that's great. Good. Yeah, I, I just, you apply online disaster, it's someone, David, you know, the time.
Yeah, and, and we've had our E. emergency management going with, with FEMA and Red Cross is also active. We've got a, uh, website open now on our county website that you can access, and we've made the Senior Citizen Center the left side of it, where adult education used to be as open as a FEMA center now, so they are there all during the day and anybody can go there and apply and ask their questions in person, uh, if they need to.
Anything else, Andy?
That's it.
Anything else? Then we're done.